I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you stand and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. This is Custody. Do any visitors sign up who speak? We have no written communication. Reports of boards and committees. I can go first with the upcoming NISBA conference, and Mr. Smith is going to be attending, so we need to give him the direction with the proposed resolutions. This was sent to you guys in the board update to review ahead of time. So hopefully, we can make it easy. I mean, has everybody reviewed them? Does anyone have any problems with what NISBA is recommending?
No, not that much.
So we're all good? Mr. Smith, you're good to vote along with what NISBA is recommending then?
And what they're not recommending.
And what they're not recommending.
Follow their recommendations.
Follow their recommendations.
Got it.
Do we have any other board and committee reports?
We have an audit committee deal, but we've probably confirmed dress report.
So we get a full report on that?
We will get a full report.
Anyone else? Okay. Turn it right over to the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Pleased to welcome Carl Widmer from Dress Room Milecki for our annual audit report. Hi, Carl.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Got the presentation up on the board. Saw a couple of you on the way in. It's that time of year again. We're going through another year, another audit. So I'm here tonight to present on the results of the school's audit for the fiscal year into June 30th, 2022. As Dominic had mentioned, we met with the audit committee last week and went through this presentation and the draft fund financial statements in more detail than I'll go through tonight. But essentially, as an overall, where we're at, we are wrapping up some final pieces of testing this week as well as starting to put together the full draft financial statement. So the district carries a due date. You want to file those by October 15th. We intend on having drafts ready for that submission to submit by your deadline. But we are still working at the office with some testing. Finishing up with Laura on a couple things. So tonight, high-level overview, similar presentation that we've prepared in the past to catch the major communications and processes of our audit as well as a little bit of the high level of the general funds results for the fiscal year. So first off, the products for our audit. Each year, what can you expect from Dress Room Milecki at the end of the audit? Of course, there's the basic financial statements. That's the 80, 90-page document that everyone's accustomed to looking at. Probably refers to that as the audit itself. But that includes three different opinions that come from Dress Room Milecki. The first is that we believe the financial statements of the district are fairly stated and could be relied upon. I guess that's really where the most value comes from you hiring a third-party CPA firm. You have readers and users of the financial statements. Residents, banks, granting agencies, the state. They're going to review these financial statements, and they're looking for that third-party verification. Can these be relied upon? Are these good numbers? And that's what the culmination of our audit results in. And that's called our official audit opinion. So we're prepared to issue what's called an unmodified audit opinion, and that's a clean opinion or the highest that you can strive for. Second report in that basic financial statement is over the internal controls. So in the first one, we look at the numbers themselves. The second one, we take a look at the processes that put together those numbers throughout the year. You know, what's happening behind the doors here at district office throughout the year to make sure that the money is being cared for and handled in an appropriate way. We have no reportable findings that we're prepared to report on this year, so that's a thumbs up on our report card. The final piece in that first basic financial statement package is a report on the district's compliance with federal guidelines. Because the district handles so much federal aid, that minimum is $750,000. You're well above that into the few millions. You're subject to what's called a single audit, and that's a compliance audit where my firm basically acts as an extension of the federal government, and we take their compliance guidelines and apply it to the programs that the district's administered throughout the year and to make sure that those were done by their rules. Again, no reportable findings there. So overall, we're prepared to issue a clean audit. The management letter is an opportunity for us to share, maybe if we identified any deficiencies in the internal controls that they're not reportable, but maybe they could use some improvement, or if we have any best practices in areas that we see. We do audits of probably 25 school districts, so we see a lot of different ways of doing things, and a lot of you are in the same setting when it comes to the processes that are happening in your district office. So if we see anything that we think could be of value, this is a place where we can share it. The auditor communications letter, this essentially reiterates what our responsibilities were. You know, at the onset of the engagement, we entered into a contract with the engagement letter, and I said, "We are going to perform an audit in accordance with the standards," and the district agreed to cooperate in the capacity you're supposed to. So provide us full access to records, you know, cooperate with inquiries, so on and so forth. This letter reiterates everyone upheld their end. Finally, there's a small financial statement on the extra classroom programs. That's all the student-run programs and clubs. New York State Ed provides a separate compliance supplement that we do a miniature audit on those programs, so that's also included. Into the financial highlights. And again, this is the focus solely on the general fund for the purpose of tonight's presentation. But up here, you see five years of revenue versus expenditures, trend activity. So your revenues is your blue line, your money coming in. Red is your spending. Over the five years, you see there are some ups and downs. There are years where expenditures were higher than revenues, and in the most recent year, your revenues exceeded your expenditures. What that means is it resulted in an operating profit or an increase to fund balance this year. Last year, that was different. You spent more than you brought in and actually reduced fund balance. So for the year ended 2022, total revenues were up a little over $66 million. Total expenditures around $65 million. And revenues edged out expenditures just shy of $1 million. I think the total, $876,000 for the year. So on a $66 million budget, you know, pretty darn close to breaking even. You can see there were increases in both expenditures and revenues this year compared to last year. They're summed up pretty quickly. On the revenue side, your share of New York State sales tax was higher than anticipated, outperforming the budget, as well as New York State aid. Your basic formula aid was higher this year, basically as a result of them withholding a little bit in the prior fiscal year due to the COVID pandemic. On the spending side, normal increases. You know, activities are continuing to get back to what's called normal. Prices and costs are also going up. The busing contract, the transportation costs were up from the prior year. Those make up the majority of the increases on the spending side. So overall, fund balance increased $876,000 from the prior year, taking total fund balance from $9.8 million to $10.7 million. Most of the increase, and that, this is showing total fund balance each bar. At the end of 2022, this graph breaks down your fund balance into two categories: your restricted fund balances and unrestricted fund balances. Restricted fund balances, of course, are your reserves, debt service, employee benefits, capital projects. That portion increased $2.2 million compared to last year. That coincides with the reduction in the unrestricted. If you recall, for the past two fiscal years, the district was pretty transparent with the intentions of their fund balance due to the uncertainty and the volatility that was the environment during the pandemic. And the district elected to go over that 4% rule and just show it in unrestricted fund balance. So that's why the blue portion was so high in 1920 and 2021. This year, it planned to move forward in reporting the reserves. It took that excess over the 4%, maintained your reserve fund balances, and increased the capital reserve by the authorized $2.2 million that went through last year's budget and proposition. So that's where fund balance stands at the end of the year. And then we do put a slide in specifically for that 4% rule. The district is subject to New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 1318, which says your unassigned fund balance should not exceed 4% of your next year's adopted budget. So 4% of your $68 million budget for '22, '23 comes in right around $2.7 million, and the amount that you report this year is within compliance. So there will be no compliance finding this year, whereas the last two years, you did have that for going over. So that is cleaned up. Money is being reported within restrictions this year. Overall, observations. And I mentioned it before, it's a pretty clean audit. It is a quick turnaround. That's why, you know, we're sitting here today not with a full draft. We're still finishing up testing, but it's a, it's a small window, so we're wrapping that up. We don't anticipate any problems reaching the deadline of October 15th. If anybody had any questions, certainly available, but I think we do have a little bit of time. We'll be working with Laura over the next, you know, week or two, 10 days to take care of the final testing and getting drafts circulated. So if anybody had questions that you come up with after tonight, please feel free to reach out to Charles or myself.
Can I ask you one more in open session? At our project committee meeting, we talked about the time when it's a factor over the asset reconciliation. Has that changed at all since we talked last week?
So we received the capital asset records yesterday. So that is the final piece of the audit testing that we'll be completing.
Yep. Good.
Is this the first year we've not had, like, any type of, with that extracurricular or anything, or is this?
Yay!
Yeah, I was just gonna say, nice job, Mrs. Bezinski. You know, that we don't have those little flags, you know, that have, I remember from my time on the audit committee and stuff that were always coming out early on.
That's, that's been a new group in over the years, for sure. And that's a difficult target. So you're speaking on that extra classroom. When you have student involvement, it is difficult to keep everybody following the same procedures, and they're awfully strict in New York State Ed guidelines on that program. So there's three approvals on every purchase, so here and there, an approval signature may be missing, but this year, at least the samples that we tested were clear.
Nice job, Mrs. Bezinski.
And lots of credit to the middle school and high school, central treasurers and principals because they are doing a lot of work with the advisors and the students to help make sure that those accounts are on track. So it's definitely a team effort.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. I'm pleased to welcome Dr. Shanahan and guests for an update on our elementary curriculum work. Welcome.
So I think you've been on the board long enough, and you know we pride ourselves on our teacher leaders in our district and how that builds the capacity of our instruction across grade levels and in different disciplines. So tonight, for our elementary curriculum update, we're going to have two of our teacher leaders share some of the information from the committees that they work with throughout the summer and the school year. The elementary literacy committee is run by Patty McCabe, and she'll be sharing with you some of the professional development work as well as curriculum work that we've done. And then the elementary math committee is run by Lori Chitman, and she will be updating you on that. And then you get to round out with me talking about computer-based testing. So I'm going to bring Patty up first to give her report about the committee's work.
Hello, everybody. You're going to have to bear with me.
Patty had a little too much fun cheering for the Bills. She's not sick, and she wanted to come anyways. I should have done that disclaimer.
Blaming our pep rally, too. It was, it was loud in there. But believe it or not, the last time I presented was three years ago. It was in 2019. So it feels good to be back live and in person. So it feels good to be up here. I just wanted to say, three years ago, when I did present, Patty used my lower register. I came here and we shared all of the work that we did creating our curriculum staircase for word work and reading comprehension. And that was three years ago. And over those three years, we have utilized those materials to develop and work with our children, provide them with a scope and sequence of skills and strategies that they thrive in, in the language arts. So today, we're going to talk a little bit about where, where we're going. Three years ago, we set these goals, and the goals have stayed the same because we really believe in the work that we've done, and we really want to provide sustainable curriculum for our children. The goals are to keep our word work and our comprehension staircase a living document, not something that sits on the shelves in our classroom. And this takes quite an effort, going back and revising and having discussions with our teachers at our grade levels and our ELA committee members have open conversations routinely with their peers about how are things going? What do you see occurring? Are things working? And they bring that feedback back to me, and, and we meet again with Dr. Shanahan to share how we can improve these documents to keep them alive in our classroom. We want them to be user-friendly, and we want them to be authentic to what we're actually doing in our rooms. It has to be a reflection. It's just not something pretty that we created. We want it to work for all of us. We will have cyclical refinement of these components and the language in those components and the readability of them. So as our programs change and grow, we want our curriculum to reflect that. We asked Dr. Shanahan on numerous occasions to provide us with sustainable professional development. Bring in people, help us. Make sure that we are maintaining the best practices for the kids in Amherst. We also want to make sure that we are working with our newly hired teachers. When they come aboard, we need to onboard them with what we do and how we do it and how these things are aligned. So there's groups of teachers that work with new faculty all the time, getting them up to speed. There's quite a learning curve in Amherst. We want to develop and implement diagnostic tools and screeners to monitor our students' progress. How are they doing? Are the things that we're doing in our classroom showing up in the works that they produce? So we use things like the Early Literacy Profile. You'll hear me call it the ELP. We use our Fast Bridge testing, which, three years ago, Dr. Shanahan presented on, and many reading inventories and phonological awareness assessments. We also really value the time that we get to work with our colleagues. We want space and opportunities for grade-level work. The committee members want to be able to share what they learn and bring it back to the classroom and share it with their peers. And grade levels really want to know what's going on. What do we need to be doing? How do we meet these standards? How do we help these children thrive in our rooms and across our districts? So we want to continue to develop opportunities for teachers to work together. So with these goals, they're quite lofty, and they require a lot of work, but we're really lucky. I'm just a facilitator of a group of wonderful, hard-working teacher leaders. And so we decided that there were many things that needed to be addressed. Many people on the committee have expertise in areas. And we decided, let's run with subcommittees. People opted to join committees to tackle some of these initiatives and to get everybody back onboard, you know, after a long pause. So there were many, many, many committees. I'm not going to go into every committee with you. I don't think my voice will last that long, but I'm going to give you a little snippet. So diagnostic tools was one of our goals. There was a group of people that were very hardworking that spent many days this summer, in the midst of July and in August, refining the ELP to make it reflect what they want for their students. There was a group of reading, our reading specialists, that really wanted, wanted to get together and provide professional development for all of our new young faculty because some of us have been around a while. And so the new teachers need to know how to give these assessments, how to analyze the results, and how to make changes to their teaching practices. So we called that the Assessment Know-How Committee. When it came to professional development, there was opportunities for, there were 13 of us this summer to work with an expert from BrainSprain. Her name is Jan Paget. And she came in for a full weekend in July and worked with us. And it wasn't just classroom teachers. It was special ed teachers. Lynn invited all the special ed teachers K through 5 to come in and learn about phonics first. And I know you've had board presentations on phonics first, but it's a word attack, reading, and spelling program that is very closely aligned to Orton Gilliam. There was another group of teachers that volunteered and were meeting, I'm on one of these subcommittees, to work with some of the new teachers to help them get up to speed in the first months of school. And we're going to be talking about our word work, phonics first, and reading comprehension. And lastly, grade-level planning. There was an outcry from teachers, I mean, not just on the committee, on the ELA committee, but outcry from teachers asking, "Can we have time this summer to work with our grade levels?" There was a grade level over at Windermere where every single solitary 5th grade teacher showed up to work together to try to tackle our new program, the Amplify Program in Science, and how to make it cross-curricular so they could embed some reading skills and some vocabulary into that program. And that just didn't happen at Windermere. It happened at Smallwood, too. Teachers asked for time to make connections between their social studies programs as well. We called this grade-level groups, trying to fit it all in. Our days are short, while they feel short, and our list is long. And we have to be creative and flexible and dynamic to make it all happen. Just a little snippet. This is a woman from BrainSprain. Her name is Jen Paget. And this is a group of teachers who spent four days with her in July learning the Phonics First program. And you're going to see a variety of names, some of them long-tenured teachers and some of them new hires. And we all worked together to learn this new way of teaching word attack and reading. I met with July 2050 to 29. Here's another little snippet of Jan working with us, teaching us how to use the materials and how to best help our students. And then the big initiative, which was refining and updating and actually producing our early literacy profiles. Dr. Shanahan met with a large group in July, and they went through the K, pre-K to 2 ELP and word work staircases, and they looked over every line and said, "Is this still working for us? Are we actually doing this? How can we make it better?" These committee members made changes after much lengthy discussions, and then we regrouped in August. And I worked with them as we laid out the new ELPs, and everybody looked it over. Everybody had a voice at the table before we started producing it. And this is us working together. And this is an ELP spread across the table. The far picture on your left, well, your right, my left. And just looking over, does it align? Is it lockstep? Many, 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 many discussions and coming to a consensus. And then we spent an entire, felt like a week, but an entire day in the gymnasium at Smallwood. And we created, we, we used a lot of paper. But it's all very purposeful. It has a purpose. But we assembled ELPs, brand-new ELPs for every K kindergarten, 1st grader, and 2nd grader in both buildings. And we put them in binders. A group of teachers volunteered on opening days to share the changes and talk about why the changes were made and how teachers understand, you know, how to implement and utilize the ELP. And they did that on opening days. The binders were all in teachers' room the very first week of school, so they were at their avail for, we benchmark and test kids the first few weeks of school. We know we're not done. We are going to collect more feedback from our teachers. We're going to hear, "How is it going?" And then this cycle will continue. But most importantly, the grade levels shared back to Dr. Shanahan how happy they were to be able to have carved out time to work with their colleagues and how appreciative they were for that and how good it felt to be back together in person, working on things that we're really committed to and that we're really passionate about. So thank you.
We're going to let you stop talking.
It sounds worse than it feels.
Lori, do you want to? So Lori Chitman will take us through some of the elementary math committee work.
As Patty said, I'm happy to be back in person chatting with you guys and sharing with you the work that we do in the, in the elementary buildings in math. So this summer, we took some opportunity, Dr. Shanahan carved out time for us to continue along that road of professionally developing our teachers in the area of mathematics because it's a very complex thing to teach. So we had some presenters. Deanna Castle-Habler, myself, Jamie Chenelli, Nerma Lintaki, who is, she was consulting with our district or is consulting with our district from Buffalo State College, Jill Zobel. And we offered it to any pre-K to 5 teacher that wanted to come. So we had 33 elementary teachers attend different sessions. So we ran three days of professional development for the teachers, and our goals were for, for all of the teachers, pre-K to 5, to provide them with ways of using math models to support conceptual understanding. We wanted to increase, help them increase their understanding of how big ideas develop over time. And then we talked about using context to build big ideas and strategy. So I'm going to give you an example of using a context. I brought a little video clip. But basically, helping kids to engage in mathematics through a story and then keeping that story alive and helping them connect the mathematics to the story. And it kind of gives them some grounding to it. One of the goals also is using routines to develop understanding and fluency. So we talked about using number strings as a way to develop computational fluency where kids are mentally solving problems. They're sharing strategies with their, with their partner. Then they're sharing them whole class, and the teacher is the recorder. So they're not writing and doing anything on paper. They're doing it mentally in their heads, and then the teacher is the recorder. The teacher is also the facilitator and asks good questions to keep the conversation going among the students. So it's not a conversation where the teacher's doing all the talking, the students are listening. It's a conversation among students, and the teacher is the facilitator. So those were our goals for getting teachers onboard with those things. So I did a little short, Dr. Shanahan wanted me to bring this to life, so I was like, "Oh, my God, I've got like a day to bring it to life." So I brought a little video clip of me doing a routine with my class. This is 1st grade. And it kind of demonstrates all of the things that we taught the teachers this summer. So I'm using a model. I'm using the rack and rack, which is that rack that's covered up with the black paper. So it's beads that are on a rack, and it supports our whole number system, which is based on 5 and 10. So kids can really anchor to that. So the kids use the rack and rack. I use the rack and rack. We model on it. We model our thinking. And the kids are going to be talking. You'll see some conversation among students in the classroom, and then I'm doing some recording. And this is a math routine called the number string. The number string has a goal, so I'm trying to hit on that big idea in math of compensation, which is a big idea in math where you can take some from one number and give it to another number, and you still have the same whole. So we do it with bigger numbers. Laura probably does it every day in her time. But we want kids to be flexible.
Your rack is a really big one.
Well, we're going to work with some small numbers here, but you'll see them understanding that idea of compensation in a fun way where they're connected to this context. So play the video.
All right, please.
All right, boys and girls. I want you to think about that story we talked about in math. Do you remember the bunk bed story?
Yeah.
Do you remember Aunt Kate and the kids?
Yeah.
And the kids were trying to fool Aunt Kate, weren't they? On the bunk bed? Okay. Today, I brought the bunk bed again. And we're going to think about that story. What I'm going to do is I'm going to show you the rec and rec or the bunk bed really quick. And I want you to tell me how many kids are on the bunk bed and how do you know? I'm going to talk with your partner about that, okay? Patty, rise up here. I'll show it quickly. Okay, quickly, look up here. How many kids were on the bunk bed? And how do you know? Class, class. This is a learning bridge. Turn this way. How many kids were on the bunk beds? And how did you see them on the bunk beds? Oh, I see a quiet thumb. Colin's got a quiet thumb. Ruby's got a quiet thumb. Emily, how many did you see on the bunk beds?
Five and three.
Five and three. And five were on the...
Top.
And three are on the bottom. And how many is that? Oh, eight. Does anyone else agree? Anyone else agree? Anyone else have a different idea? Okay. How did you know that there were five on the top and three on the bottom, Emily?
Um, because we talked about it.
We did? Oh, you talked about it with your partner? What did you guys talk about?
It was five and three, um, or three and five.
Oh, you didn't know how many were on the top and how many were on the bottom? Does it matter? Would it still make eight?
Yeah. It doesn't matter at all.
What do you know about that, Emily? Let me switch them around.
It would still be the same, but three on the other side and five on the top.
And that's all amazing. Okay. All right. I'm going to show you a different way. You ready? Put your eyes on me. I'm going to come up here and change this a little bit. Everyone? Take a look at the bunk beds now.
Four and four.
Okay. Go ahead and chat with your partner. See, some learning bridges going up already. You're ready. Give me a quiet thumb if you know how many and tell me how you know. How do you know? Lucas, how many were on the bunk beds?
Four.
Four on the top. Like this. Is that what you saw, four on the top? And which scale on the bottom?
Four.
And four on the bottom. And how many kids was that, Lucas? How many kids did Aunt Kate have at the party? Eight kids? Huh. Everyone agreed? Any other ideas? What happened? What happened at the party? First, there were five and three. We said that was eight. And now there's four and four, but there's still eight kids. So you're going to talk to your partner about what happened at the party. Partner? Talk to your partner. Class, try to give math class. Can I see learning bridges going up? You're ready. I heard some really interesting talking about what you guys were thinking about this. Wyatt, how can this be the same number of kids on the bunk beds?
Um, because there's four and four.
What do you think about that?
There's, um, there's five and three makes eight and four and four makes eight.
What happened on the bunk beds, Wyatt, to change? What was different about it?
We moved one over and then we moved down to make four.
Okay, put your learning bridges down. Look up here. Does anyone else understand what Wyatt understands? What else does Wyatt understand here? What is he saying, Ayla? We had five and three, right? And we ended up with how many kids on the top?
Four.
And how many on the bottom? What happened in the bunk bed, Ayla, that Wyatt just talked about? One kid went down to the bottom bunk. One kid came down to the bottom bunk. Did you guys see that? So he came down to the bottom bunk. And that made four on the bottom and four on the top? So it still makes it eight?
Yeah.
He's speaking. So we, you can see in my classroom, I've created a math community. And kids know how to implement the routines that I've taught them, the quiet thumb on their knee and how to turn knee to knee and tie with their partner. So that's some of the work that we did with teachers this summer was building that math community and how you do that before you even engage in doing a routine, like a number string. All right, boys and girls. I want you to think of... All right. So over the three days in the summertime for the professional development sessions, we met on July 25th, July 27th, and July 28th. The pre-Ked, on grade two groups, focused on choral counting and counting collections. Those are two routines that we taught them. We used the rec and rec as a math model, which you saw me using, which can also be a tool that's used into the intermediate grades to support student thinking. We talked about number strings as a math routine. And we also, the kindergarten teachers also met, and they made some revisions to their curriculum. So they're using the same math material that we all use to create that horizontal alignment between grade levels. But we're pushing in a little bit of these contexts, which make math more engaging and more conceptual for kids. So they had time to work on that as a grade level team. Grades three to five worked with Nirmala Nataki. And she worked on choral counting and counting collections. She also developed the idea of using math models to develop multiplication and division and fractions. And then she also taught some math routines. There are some pictures on the next slide. This is the pre-K to grade two groups. Deanna Hubler is modeling. And the students are discovering the big idea of compensation, like you just saw during a context lesson. In the middle of the picture there are two teachers that were practicing doing a number string. We're giving them practice to do it before they do it in front of kids. And the last picture there is just a teacher recording student thinking during the number string and then getting to the idea of doubles and near-doubles and developing that idea. We also took some pictures to see what grades three to five were working on. So in grades three to five, Nirmala covered contexts called field trips and fundraisers. And she worked on the idea of fair shares and developed the idea of using models for fractions. And then she also did one called, a context called the grocery store. And that was a unit on multiplication. So that was a context that got them involved in multiplication. She did some routines, such as number strings. She did tape diagrams, three reads. And she did one called balance mobiles. So there's the teachers engaged in that work that she was doing with them. So just like in ELA, we want to sustain the professional development. We don't want it to just be a one-and-done situation. We want to continue to grow and learn in these areas. So actually, tomorrow, we have some professional development set up so that we can kind of catch all teachers up to the same level of understanding. So we had a lot of teachers come in the summer, but we still need to get a lot of the other teachers on board. So we're doing that tomorrow, where they'll learn about the math routines of number strings. They'll talk about building a math community. And we'll talk about context. Grades three to five will continue to work on math routines and models to build math conceptually. And then we also have a unique partnership with, we're part of what's called the Buffalo Math Collaborative. And as part of the Master Teacher Program, we are connected together with Amherst and Cheetawaga and Maryvale. We all split the responsibility of bringing in Cara M. She's from New York City. And she does consulting with school districts. And she supports all of that work that I just talked about. So she comes, she's coming four times this year. And it's a unique situation because we get to meet with her. We get to plan lessons. And then we get to go into a classroom. And she does the lesson, and we fishbowl and watch it. And then we all go back and we talk about and debrief on it. So it's sustained development. You know, we're having her numerous times come and talk about the same thing over and over again so we can really understand and get to know the work. So that's a great opportunity for us as a district. And that's it. Thank you. Just to summarize, too, a little bit, you've asked over time, like, what was the impact of the pandemic? So when I started meeting with Lori, one of the things that we knew is math fluency was definitely something that didn't have the practice that it needed. So everything she was focusing on focused on math fluency, the choral counting, the counting collections, the number string. That all focused on that. And in math, they call it context. In literacy, we say it's a story. So what context is doing? Kids learn through story and they learn through narrative. So all that we're doing is taking these more mathematical concepts and we're grounding them in ways that kids can see them in their lives. And that's really the tweak that's being done. It's just different disciplines use different terms around it. And it's been highly effective on what the teachers, they started some of the work in the summer school to practice before the professional development and then even further. We also noticed that we, fractions was an issue over the past couple of years. And we saw it in different ways in our data. And so when Nirmala came in and worked on routines, she focused specifically on those. So the topics that we picked and worked out with Lori were very specific to that. As well as when Patty was talking about the ELP, the Early Literacy Profile, some of our practices had changed and the teachers were feeling that misalignment. So all that work in the ELP was really to get assessment and instruction in line so that we can really assess what we're doing. If it's having an impact, if it's not, then we need to do some more work. So excellent work on that. So couldn't do it without them. I get to talk about computer-based testing. So in June 16th, why not send out a memo from the state ed saying that we would now be doing computer-based testing? So I want to let you know that I have been meeting with the three through eight teachers. And we have been talking about, what does this look like? So let me tell you what was shared in the memo. I did put this in a board report, but I wanted to give you a chance to see it again. So in, not this year, nothing changes this year. There'll be regular ELA tests and math tests, grades three through eight that can be done paper pencil. Or some districts already choose to take them computer-based. And so we will continue our ELA and math that way. Science, it was typically a fourth grade test. Due to the standard changes, there is no fourth grade science test this year. They're preparing and they've been field testing to move that to fifth grade. So this year, we will only do ELA and math, paper pencil, no fourth grade science test. That'll be grades three through eight for ELA and math. What we have to do, though, is prepare for the requirement that in the spring, next spring, 2024, grades five and eight will take their ELA, math, and science all digitally through the computer. And then the following spring in 2025, it is required to add in four through six. And then the following year, three through seven. So that is the required rollout. I've been meeting with the administrative team in the summer after this memo came out in June, saying, how do we want to handle this? What is our approach going to be? How are we going to roll this out? Getting them focused first and then on to our teachers, which we've done. So if you think about it, a fourth grader this year and a seventh grader this year will be the first cohort of children to be required to take the test digitally. We decided together as a group that we would focus practicing on all grade levels. And we are, I met with everybody on opening days, all of the teachers, and we've talked about this. And what we like to do is avoid giving any assessments for students, but we're calling them practices because they need to learn how to use the digital tools and the digital spaces. And we don't want that to impact what we're learning about them as mathematicians or in ELA, stuff like that. So we're going to be practicing. And I'll get to how we're going to do that in a little bit. And we're going to add in the test. Their goal is to try to get people on board by 2025. There is a little discussion about third grade testing at a state level. So we're kind of waiting to see, a little rumbling just because of the age. And that's really the year that kids begin to keyboard. Because in third grade, that's when their hands are big enough to fit on a keyboard. So there's some discussion around that about what the composition of that test might look like. So we'll just wait and see how that comes out. So what does this mean? It means preparing not only our students but our teachers because this was new news to them when the school year was winding down. So one of the things is the toolbars. There are different toolbars for the ELA assessment and the science assessment and the math assessment. So we have to learn how to do the work digitally through those toolbars. And we can do that through eDoctrine. And I'm skipping ahead of my presentation, but it's coming out, so I'll say it anyways. We are fortunate that we've used eDoctrine to build assessments years ago. And it's gotten much more intuitive and very easy. It also mimics the New York State's platform very well. NextTIRA is the platform and a group that the state uses. So we want to use the toolbars and the digital spaces that most align with what it's going to look like when the students take the test. But that means, you know, looking at questions. We went into NextTIRA and all of the classroom teachers on opening days. And the administrators did it first in July. We all took tests at different grade levels. And we did a task analysis. What is it that our kids will need to know and be able to do in order to be successful in these spaces? And so they just went through on, there's test samplers that you can go through on the New York State website. And I'm just showing you this, not that you're going to discriminate right now, but the toolbars change by grade level. So what it looks like in three and four, what happens is because the kids can do more complex math work, the toolbar grows in five and six. So we have to understand that as educators first. So we have to know how this is switching and moving so that we can teach it. Eventually, when it all gets put into play, you know, they'll come knowing that knowledge the next year. So it'll be a little bit easier. And by the way, it changes in seven and eight again. Yes, yes. So anyways, not that you needed to discriminate these, but I just wanted to kind of show you like what we're doing right now. We, as I said, the administrators have gained an understanding. I did an afternoon with them around this. And then we did a day on September 1st. We're doing October 5th and November 8th again. The teachers are working on developing an understanding. They worked through math. And tomorrow, they will be looking at the science and ELA. And they're going to do a comparison, what's similar and what's different. Because some of these, like the highlighting and stuff and stuff that's down here, Because some of these, like the highlighting and stuff and the stuff that's down here, like obviously the rule is very specific to math, but there are other tools down here that could be the same across all three. So we'll be doing some work on that tomorrow. And so then that's step number one for our teachers and they have to actually learn how to go into edoctrine and give, and create these exercises or tests eventually. And so what they need to be able to do is link the standards to banks of questions to assess students' knowledge in certain mathematical, you know, English language arts as well as science concepts. So that is something they're working on. If you see your teachers in the building, give them a big hug. As I, I went ahead a little bit, but we're using edoctrine. The good news is we have it in-house, they've been in the system for other reasons. Actually, I met with eighth grade math last week and they were excited because they had tried creating these assessments years ago and it was a very clunky system. And they said it was so much easier, so that was a really positive meeting. And so I'm just sharing with you that I'm working and the building administrators are working on an implementation schedule. How are we going to get kids ready over time for each one of these? So that, you know, and I just shared that kind of the drafty work, you know, that we've done so far, but that now they are massaging on their grade levels and they're going to do a little bit more of that work tomorrow when they get together. They're very, our teachers are very bright and they're very dedicated to what they're doing and they want to, and they're very clear and I'm glad in this understanding that assessing them and, you know, when they don't know how to use the tools, isn't really going to give us assessment of where their knowledge and understandings are in ELA, math or science. So we need to teach these tools and maintain some of our paper testing and so that it's not giving us some. So we're getting accurate information on our assessments of students' understanding. Once they understand the toolbars, then that may merge together a little bit clearer. But we're being very careful about that right now. And this is just work that we've talked about. We're finalizing how many exercises they want to give. We also talked about like the cognitive load of this, right? So I don't want to give a child in a new digital space a high level question because they're just going to be negotiating the space. So I want to give a question that they can answer so that they just learn how to negotiate the space first. Once they can negotiate the digital space, then we increase the cognitive demand with the question. So that they know, like they're pretty clear on that, we're going to do, practice the questions and on problems that the kids can be successful with so that we're really focusing on the tools and we don't overload. So that's the work that they're, they'll be doing tomorrow and continuing on. So I got the most exciting presentation. Questions for any of us?
I have a question of computer-based testing. I feel like this is deja vu, but didn't we talk about this like five or six years ago?
So Mr. Penella was in my position and I found a file, right? 1516, I think it was, a year, no?
Well.
But I did, I did go back to this stomach.
Yeah, I think at the time it was optional.
Yes.
It was part of the race to the top agenda. Can't think of a better way to emerge from a global pandemic than to mandate computer-based testing after we've had a year or two of computer overuse and hybrid learning. But it was optional at one point. Something tells me this was the state's opportunity to maybe move it forward.
So that never happened?
No. It, it was optional.
It's optional and really another reason a lot of districts didn't go through with it right away was there were a lot of issues with the platform itself, like they couldn't handle the number of users. So people were hesitant to get in and get kids taking a digital test. But I remember literally one night before I was in this job, talking with somebody and they like couldn't find an entire grade levels test in the digital system. There were problems with it. New York State and the memo that they sent are now assuring us that they've built up a system that's more robust to be able to handle the number of users if the entire state gets on. Because we all have similar windows, so it's a lot at one time in the system. And, and I'm, I'm with Mr. Penella. I'm like, we're supposed to be closing gaps and now we're going to spend time learning digital tools. But we'll do that and we'll do it well. But it's, is it really the best use of time?
Was it, and you may not know this because, was this also the issue that some people didn't like? For whatever reason, I remember like Bill Gates and Microsoft.
Uh, well.
Or was that something completely different?
There was a host of things people didn't like, from APR to.
And that was the same time as this, right?
To, yeah, this was all wrapped up in that race to the top agenda.
Well, and I was on the technology committee at that time too. So a little bit of color around that. What she was saying earlier is if they don't know how to use the platform and the platform's not working well, you're not testing what they know. You're testing their ability to deal with the malarkey that's going on in the computer, you know? So we had, as a district, decided not to go ahead with it because we didn't want our kids to be dinged because it was adding a level of complexity when we were still allowed to use pen and paper and they know how to use pen and paper. And so it wasn't going to lower their scores based on them trying to have to deal with the computer issue also. And they would be competing against kids who were still doing it on paper and pen, you know? So the kids who would go straight to digital wouldn't have necessarily the same scores as the kids who were still doing it the way they knew how to do it. So.
If you go back to the first slide with the timeline, I think you'll see, you know, the, we have the option to go all grade levels right away. But we're choosing to go with the required grade levels in a scaffolded approach over the next four years. Because there are issues that come up with administration and scoring of the computer-based tests. You know, the computers freeze, the programs get locked out. You know, there's many stories we've heard from our colleagues in other districts that have implemented computer-based testing. So I think it benefits us to do the minimum in this particular case, even though, you know, in scaffolded over the few years. I mean, to the state's credit, I know we got a June 16th memo, but in the past, that June 16th memo would say it needs to be implemented next school year. At least in this June 16th memo, it gave us a year's notice for 2024 instead of 2023. So that's a positive direction. But yeah, it will, it will definitely be a challenge. I think the mindset was that, you know, the hybrid learning, the digital learning forced a lot of kids that normally weren't on to computer devices. So maybe it makes sense to move forward with this, but we'll see how it goes.
And the teachers have been, once you get over the what, what are we doing? Like what happened when we left for the summer kind of thing? They've, they've been very positive about it and they see how they can do some practices with the kids and then it can work over time because they did have kids in a lot of digital spaces. It's learning this digital space is going to be really important. And not, and not like Tony said, not, or Mr. Penella said, not making sure that we're separating the learning from the computer work that needs to be done. But we have good people there, they've got that down. Anything else? Patty, Lori, no?
I just want to say many of the board members were here during that time when I was in your role and I inherited an infrastructure, I inherited an infrastructure of curriculum committees and teacher leaders that served us very well during a time when we had initiatives being imposed upon us. But it's nice to see that these curriculum committees are still alive and our leaders are still leading work. I mean, we did some good work back in the day, but nothing compared to what you presented here tonight under Lynn's leadership. So I'm glad that this board put that infrastructure in place and I'm pleased to see that the work continues and that our teachers see value in it and it's led by, you know, our teachers. So great job, thank you. From computer-based testing, I think we end the superintendent's report there. We'll certainly have more to come over the next year as we inch closer to implementation in spring of 2024. That's all I have for us tonight, thank you.
All right. We will need a motion for new business items.
We'll make a new motion for new business items, E1, A through I, 2, C through E, and 3, C and D.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items, E1, A through I, 2, C through E, and 3, C and D? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Ms. Caselli, do we have follow-up action on that?
None.
Great. And we will need a motion to convene to executive session.
I make a motion to convene to executive session to discuss matters regarding Amherst Administrator Association negotiations.
Do we have a second?
I'll start first.
Thank you so much. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries seven, zero. Thank you, everybody, for coming.